Okay, we'll call this council public hearing to board. It is eight twenty-nine P M. The topic is the field of planning commission's decision on commitment for minute C U P four point three since the plan. S L.
That's the wrong one. Sorry, Mr. Mayor.
Do that one.
I'm sorry.
Don't do that.
Five, that was one, that's the one we're. This is comprehensive plan and zone mapping amendment C P Z A four, one, two, three, five, eight, six, four, six, McNaughtie Way, Columbia Community Mental Health. So I've been going to our city manager direction. And I think before we get, oh, our associate manager.
Thank you.
Didn't show, but I think before we get started, I'm gonna have our attorney talk about a little bit.
Yeah, let's open it up and then we'll get to that. Yeah, it will have Bill speak when we get to that. Um, so it's now eight thirty. Um, the public hearing is now open. This is a legislative land use hearing. The subject of the hearing is amendments to the St. Helens Community Development Code. The applicant is Columbia Community Mental Health. Because legislative proceedings require the observance of certain procedural formalities, the council must take a few moments to cover some preliminary matters and required statements. Does any member of the council wish to declare an actual or potential conflict of interest or bias in this matter?
Yes.
What is the nature of your?
I'm employed by the agency.
And do you feel like you want to participate? Do you feel like this is a conflict of interest that allows you to make a unbiased decision?
Unfortunately, because there's money involved, I think it does constitute that. So. Once again, Anderson and.
Okay, so you abstain. So you cannot participate in all the hearing or any of the deliberations later in the week? Is anyone else?
I also want to say.
Uh, do you want to state why? Um, C C M H is a former employer of mine. And you feel like that's enough to, you know, you don't want to make a fair decision tonight?
I think it would be best if I abstained.
Any other counselors? So I, I don't know how we want to address. Um, we have a unique circumstance where we have a planning commissioner who made a recommendation on this decision. Um, is now a city counselor. Um, I don't know if we want to bring Bill Monahan on into this just to.
I think it would come back to the question of do you feel you could make a, uh, maybe with new information provided, can you make a fair decision?
Yeah, I believe I could make a fair decision. Uh, any new information that was above and beyond, but I heard on commission.
I mean, the one difference here is this is not a de novo decision. This is not an appeal. Uh, it's the same staff report tailored toward the city council. So that's kind of why there's a slight difference in this.
Okay, so let me ask, let me ask your attorney.
Yeah, I think it would be wise.
So, uh, Bill Monahan? Uh, you probably have to log out and log back on.
He's on and I'm just not gonna show him up.
So, Mary, I can hear you, but I can't put my video on.
Okay.
Can you hear me?
Yeah.
So on a legislative matter, a conflict of interest is the key issue of bias. Does not apply on a legislative land use matter. So the issue that I I hear Council Chilton and Council Guterson, uh, both have declared what sounds like, uh, they consider to be a potential or an actual conflict of interest, so they feel that they should not participate. Counselor Hubbard's situation is different him since he has participated as a planning commissioner. And as he noted, he has read the materials and he sees that there's some, uh, some difference apparently from when the planning commission reviewed the matter. As long as he is able to, uh, participate, uh, uh, without a conflict of interest, and again, it sounds like his issue is is merely biased, that is appropriate.
So, uh, so should we go ahead and I'll go ahead and, uh, make a motion to, uh, accept, uh, for Hubbard to be, uh, the, 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 the process?
Well, you don't need to to have a motion unless there's a challenge to participation.
Okay.
Okay, so does anyone in the audience want to object to the ability of a counselor to make a fair decision? We have two abstentions. Counselor President Chilton will not participate and Counselor Gunderson will not participate in the hearing tonight.
Yes, I object to, uh, Mr. Hubbard, Detective Hubbard being because he has already heard this and I don't think he should be involved. For the same reason I didn't think you should have been involved in the last hearing.
You have an objection. Anyone else?
Okay, well, as already asked you the question, so I'm gonna go ahead and make a motion that you, uh, that we, um, well, Counselor Hubbard, a decision maker. Okay.
I think she can't say. I'll issue so.
Well, I thi- I think for the process, um, um, you said you could do this, so is what you said. Uh, I think that it would allow the government body to. Is that correct, Bill?
I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor, you, um, you faded out. I couldn't hear what your comment was.
So I I started to make a move and, and, you know, like, well, I could, I could, you know, not be part of the process, but I said, I don't think, uh, this council can function without, uh, three members.
Well, uh, good, great question. Uh, have, I can't see the council right now. For some reason, all I'm seeing is is my name on the screen. So I can't see whether Counselor Chilton, Council President Chilton and Counselor Gunderson, have they left the dais yet?
Uh, no, they should probably, yes.
Okay, uh, so you're gonna be left with two members of council deciding whether or not to uphold the objection for Counselor Hubbard. However, as I mentioned, if the issue is not financial, if it's not a conflict of interest, there isn't a question of bias on a legislative matter.
So there's no need or reason to.
There's not a reason to so, but so just to be safe though, if since there are only two remaining members of council that that can vote, um, I would suggest that one of you make a motion, the other make, uh, a second and then have a vote to see whether the majority of those members who are qualified to vote on this who have not already abstained from the proceeding, whether or not, um, counsel, whether they vote uh, in favor of, uh, disqualifying Counselor Hubbard.
Uh, I made the motion already. Second, I'm gonna call the vote. I'm just calling on, uh, me and I'm gonna be an I and and Counselor Sunday, right?
You, yes, you and the remaining council member, Counselor Sundin would be the only people to vote.
All right, you guys want to re- ease yourself? Yes, sir, be better. Uh, you can be a while, so just checking back every coffee.
So, all of the conduct of the hearing are set forth in the handout in the back of the room. Generally, the order of proceedings will be followed. Required statements, staff report, which I will give, applicant's presentation, those in favor of the application, those opposed, rebuttal by the applicant, both of the hearing, those of the record, deliberations, which will happen at regular session, and the decision. The following statements are to be made at the commencement of the hearing. The standard for a decision by the council shall be based on St. Helens Municipal Code seventeen twenty, one twenty, section one and section two, standards for legislative decisions. All testimony, arguments, and evidence must be directed towards those applicable stand standards previously listed or such criteria in the code or plans which the person believes applies to the decision. Okay, so if you wouldn't mind Kathy pulling up, um, project site. Or, um, within the staff report, um, it's just the first attachment there. The staff report. So I handed out, I'll cover this really quickly. I handed out four items or Jacob did, um, and those items were received since the staff report finalized. So three were letters of support. One was from Columbia Pacific C C O. There was a letter from Community Action Team. There was a letter from NAMI, Columbia County, Division of NAMI. Um, and then there was also a presentation summary from the applicant. So you should have four handouts. Um, and I also emailed those to you prior to this meeting. Great, thanks Kathy. Um, so tonight we're looking at a zone change and a subsequent comprehensive plan map change to C C M H's property. Um, so Columbia Community Mental Health is divided into two parcels. Um, you can see them there. The two parcels total just under ten acres, so nine point seven seven acres. And the request tonight is to rezone them from light industrial to general commercial. Um, C C M H will talk about their reason for rezoning, so I won't touch on that other than to say it supports their expansion of facilities. And they'll talk about that, um, I'm sure in their presentation. So the two parcels, um, what's on them today? So the four point one acre parcel in the south there, um, is already developed, uh, with their main campus. Um, it was developed recently, fairly recently in two thousand and four. Um, and this property is also developed with parking improvements, um, and has some wetlands on the southwest side. Um, so this property is entirely developed for all intents and purposes. It can't be further developed. And that'll, that'll play into some of the, um, talks later. Um, the second property, the five point six acre property, um, is less developed and probably underdeveloped. Um, it's got three modular buildings on it, um, which C C M H houses offices. And then there's also a former single family dwelling located along Gable Road that's been converted to an office as well. Um, that conversion, uh, happened, um, can't remember the exact year, but it was sometimes oh, six, oh, seven, I believe. Um, so if we could go to the next map. So this is our current zoning map, um, as Kathy scrolls down here. So the, the specific request, as I said, is to turn the color from light industrial, light gray, to that reddish color, which is general commercial. Um, and they'd like to rezone both of their properties there. And you can kind of see the, the pattern trend of general commercial along Gable. So this would kind of continue that general commercial trend, uh, along Gable Road. So I'll keep my presentation brief because there's a lot of people here. Um, but with all zone changes, the, one of the first standards we look at for decisions is our statewide planning goals. And the two relevant goals in this case are goal nine, uh, which is related to economic development and goal twelve, which is related to transportation facilities. Um, so goal nine, uh, the economic development, uh, statewide planning goal includes a look at our economic opportunities analysis. Um, so goal nine is satisfied when we can find that the zone change will not negatively impact industrial or employment lands which support economic development. So the question for us is how do we know how much commercial lands are appropriate for our city and how do we know how much industrial lands are appropriate for our city? And that's what the E O A, the Economic Opportunities Analysis, did for us. Um, so our E O A is from two thousand and eight, two thousand and nine, so it's not the highest quality. It is a little out of date. Um, and that's also why we've applied for a grant to get a, get a new B O A. So we're in the process of updating it. Um, but for the purposes of this zone change tonight, it's the only adopted planning document that we have to be able to kind of base our decision about employment lands on. Um, so what does it say? It says, um, in two thousand and eight and two thousand and nine, that we had a surplus of seventy-eight acres of industrial lands. And so since two thousand and eight, two thousand and nine, we've rezoned some industrial lands to other zoning districts. Um, so specifically, we rezoned twenty-six acres. Um, so that still leaves us with a fifty-two acre surplus of industrial lands. Um, in, in addition, the E O A also said that we had a ten acre shortage of commercial lands. So those two findings alone support the rezone from light industrial to general commercial. And so just based on that, staff feels like goal nine for economic development can be met. I will say here, this is where the planning commission disagreed with staff, um, and they voted at their decision, um, to recommend denial. Um, there were five members present at that meeting and four voting members. So we had four voting members at that meeting and three voted against and one voted for it. Um, and so we're short of planning commissioners. So there were just less people at the dais at the time. Um, they felt during that meeting that the reduction of light industrial lands would negatively impact, um, the available lands for industrial development. And they also mentioned that there could be a conflict between the light industrial lands across, across the street on Gable, um, with the general commercial zoning proposed in this. Um, staff really feels like there's not evidence of that, um, and also our adopted document, um, supports the rezone for, for the reasons I've already stated. So goal twelve, moving on to transportation. Um, so goal twelve requires that we look at what's called the transportation planning rule, or T P R for short. So the T P R requires that all zone changes are reviewed to determine if they significantly affect a transportation facility and significantly effect is defined in the O A Rs. So determine our impact, um, to determine the impact of the zone change on the transportation system. We look at what's called a reasonable worst case development of the site under both the existing zoning and the proposed zoning to see what the impact might be of the rezone. Um, and C C M H was wise. They hired a traffic consultant who helped us to develop that reasonable worst case, um, reasonable worst case plan. Um, and I'll back up and say that because we have the four point one acre parcel that's already developed, uh, we focused our T P R study on just the larger of the two properties, the underdeveloped property, since the smaller of the two is unlikely to be redeveloped, um, in your future. So, let's see, I mentioned that C C M H had a traffic consultant prepare this analysis. That's included as a attachment in the report. Um, it concluded two things. One, that all of the high traffic generators allowed in the general commercial zone, like retailers, grocery stores, are not proposed with C C M H, C C M H's ownership. C C M H grant funders require that the facilities that they develop remain in C C M H ownership, not gonna sell it to a retailer um, for at least twenty years, um, which is longer than our transportation systems plan, planning horizon. So that's important. Um, our transportation systems plan, planning horizon is twenty years when it was adopted. Um, C C M H is gonna own this property much longer than that, and they're not going to develop it with retail outlets. Um, and so that was an important finding that the transportation consultant found. Um, and so from that, they used ODOT's threshold for significantly impact. And it determined that if C C M H voluntarily elects to apply a trip cap of eleven hundred, approximately eleven hundred trips daily, that the transportation planning rule requirements would be met and there would be no significant impact on the system. And so the planning commission during their hearing expressed concern about traffic impacts to the already at capacity intersection of Gable Road and U S thirty. We all know that's a bottleneck of congestion. Um, but staff's feeling is that if this property were developed with light industrial zoning, with the existing zoning, there would still be impact to the Gable Road and U S thirty intersection. There's no way around traffic impacts at that intersection. We know it's overloaded and we have planning that supports improvements there. Um, that also isn't the decision tonight. The decision tonight is whether or not this will create a significant impact to the transportation facility, which is defined in our code. And so with the condition with the trip cap, um, staff feels like this T P R rule is met. Um, it doesn't exceed the requirements of the T P R rule, um, with that condition. So staff has one condition recommended for approval. Um, there's two other conditions in the staff report that we can talk about if we hear testimony and we want to get into those, but for right now, I think that's all I have. Staff recommends approval. I think the condition of approval for a trip cap.
We'll have the opportunity, um, now appear to, you're pretty come on up.
Get started, I'll stop on it.
Uh, my name's Al Peterson. I thought architecture and design is my business.
Um, go ahead.
Hi, Jacobson, executive director, C C M H.
Um, I'm going to start first. Um, I will only briefly talk about transportation. I think that Jennifer Dimson did a good job talking about the transportation. Um, and as she mentioned, um, C C M H hired a big senior here. Um, and we had meetings with city staff. Um, he's also, what the meeting that we had with city staff, we had ODOT planners involved. Um, when, um, our transportation consultant proposed, um, her analysis and the trip cap, um, we heard nothing from ODOT. And we expected to hear something and we presumed that nothing meant that, yes, one, we had your meeting with you, then two, we read this. Uh, and three, we have no effect. So that's all I can say about the transportation part of it, except for a minor thing that I'm gonna say towards the end. So, um, I'm gonna quickly go through twenty minutes. I did give you the summary, uh, which is a one page summary, uh, which I, uh, Jennifer just handed out to you, I guess, is now. Um, so basically, C C M H, uh, next slide, please. Basically, C C M H's current uses, uh, in their current facilities are offices, counseling rooms, meeting rooms, patient pharmacy, and, uh, Jennifer Dimson did mention this, what is called the crisis receiving center. She mentioned a remodel that was done about five years ago when it was converted to a a children's crisis center, for lack of, I don't know the exact.
Yeah, parent training.
Parent training, okay, so it was a parent training and recently it's been converted to the, um, what's called the receiving center. And since I don't know the specifics, I'll let, unveil the fact, but it's in the, it's in the, the house right now. So, uh, next slide, please.
All right.
Okay, um, so C C M H plans on needs to expand and they plan on, uh, additional office space. Additional supporting facilities. Also, this crisis receiving center, which I mentioned, they've also have their, uh, plans, a what's called a transitional supportive housing center of two, eight patients. Um, and I want to point out, um, both of those two items in the zoning code, um, crisis receiving center is defined in the zoning code are the closest definition that I can find is, uh, an immediate care facility, which means it's not a hospital, but pe- people can receive care. That's under the zoning code. Um, the transitional supportive housing center, also, I would classify as an immediate care facilities or maybe a community care facility. I don't know. Um, but I also wanted to mention that the longer term plans may be to convert the facility into a detox, this long. But that will be pending, but that would also be called something like an immediate care facility or a congress. I don't want to get into the weeds on that, but it's important to make those definitions because, next slide, please. Offices under the current zoning are only allowed as part of an industrial park. So you can loosely say that C C M H's current facility is in an industrial park. Very loose. Um, crisis receiving center, transitional supportive housing, detox, all of the proposed additional services that C C M H wants to provide Columbia County are not allowed under the current zoning. They are allowed under general commercial. So the logic of reflecting a zone change at the, at any point. Pretty much in order to expand the services, they need to have a. We're here to. Then, um, next slide, please. Well, what about barriers? No, don't allow uses, use variables. Oh, not enough. Uh, next slide, please. So the areas in green are all the, or sorry, the areas in pink are all the areas in St. Helens that are zoned commercial. The areas in gray are all the areas that are zoned industrial and the little orange area right there is the subject property. Um, I also want to point out, um, which I think everybody knows because of the traffic jam that happened last Saturday. Um, Gable Road is a major street. Gable Road and subsequently Old Portland Road is a major entrance into our city. Um, and I also graphically wanted to show that we have a lot of industrial land compared to what we have have commercial. Now, I couldn't figure out a way to show it graphically, but I also want to point out that except for that one area on McNaughtie Way, which is the old former hospital property, a lot of the land, oh, and I should say except for the property you're developing right down the street here, except for those two properties, most of that pink area is already developed. So we have commercial lands, but as Jennifer Jimson just pointed out, our economic opportunities analysis points out specifically that we have a lack of commercial lands as opposed to industrial lands. Uh, next slide, please. So Jenny specifically spoke about two sections of our comprehensive plan, which I'll get to, but we also need to talk about a few other pieces of our comprehensive plan. First, I'll talk about the economic opportunities analysis that we've, then we talked about, then I'll also talk about how we need analysis. And the reason I'm talking about how we need to know is because of those other services, which I pointed out in the zoning code are called concrete care or inter, what is it, intermediate care?
Yeah, intermediate.
Intermediate care facilities. So first I'll get on to the economic opportunities analysis. So this is the table right out of that document. It shows the available land, three hundred and sixty-eight acres. It shows twenty-year demand from twenty two thousand and nine. And they don't add up. In fact, there is a twenty or fifty-eight acre surplus in this economic opportunities now. So we have, in theory, fifty-eight acres more than we really need. Now, Jennifer pointed out that she said seventy-eight acres. There's a couple of title. Again, you know, it does say seventy-eight someplace else, which is what she chose. I chose to use the table, which is more conservative. With, only that. So basically, it says that we don't need more industrial lands and we have a surplus. Um, next, next slide, please. I also want to point out that this economic opportunities analysis said very clearly, this is a very conservative analysis. If you read the underline thing in red, it says our surplus could be as much as two hundred and fifty-five acres. So seventy-eight in one section of the analysis or fifty-eight in another section of the analysis is extremely conservative. And they say in the study itself is very conservative. Okay, so what's happened since, um, I moved the slide, um, no, next slide. So what else does it say in that, um, study? Well, one of the things it says is it recommends rezoning the Boise property down here from industrial to commercial, which we have done, and now the city is working on rezoning or developing. It also said right in the document where Jenny also already said is the city should adjust some zoning and transfer some industrial lands to commercial lands. And that's what I've underlined and read. Uh, next slide. Okay, so since two thousand and nine, you've rezoned Boise proper property, which was already pointed out. Uh, you've also rezoned this little property on Deer Island, or Deer Island Zone from, uh, industrial new apartments. Uh, you've also rezoned this little property on Deer Island, or Deer Island Zone from uh, industrial new apartments. Uh, so you're reducing in a probably conservative surplus by twenty-three acres. So in theory, conservatively, you have a, you have a thirty-five acre surplus of industrial. Next slide, please. What else has happened since two thousand and nine? Yeah. Armstrong closed. So Armstrong in the study was a twenty-two acre parcel. That twenty-two acre parcel is now vacant. Uh, so now our thirty-five acre surplus and basically jumped up back to where it was. We now end up with a fifty-six acre surplus, and that is on the east end of the center. Next slide, please. What happened this year? Cascade Tissue is closing, as we think. I don't know in reality how many acres there are, which are part of Cascade Tissue. I went on the city's GIS site, drew a little circle around it, and or no, I went on the counties, cause county will give the area. Went on the county's GIS site, I drew a circle around what looked like all the lands that Cascade is using at the moment. I came up with forty-five acres, and that was also very conservative. So a fifty-eight acre surplus from the previous slide, plus forty-five more acres, we're now at roughly a hundred and one acres conservatively. Uh, next slide, please. So we go back to that paragraph, which mentions two hundred and fifty-five acres. So we're looking at could pet, what could potentially be a three hundred and fifty acre or more surplus of industrial lands. This is in the city's documents, is part of the comprehensive plan and part of the documents that a decision has to be based. Uh, next slide. So I'm going back to what I already pointed out. We're asking for a general commercial zone rather than uh, an industrial zone, and these are all of the uses that are currently not allowed, which would be allowed in a general commercial zone. Uh, next slide, please. Remember I talked a little bit about intermediate care facility or congregant care facility? Well, the other planning document, which is also part of our comprehensive, comprehensive plan, is the Housing Needs Analysis, which was recently done, two thousand and nineteen. It has a little section called group order. Okay. I highlighted in yellow, it talks about group quarters and it specifically calls them congregant care or group housing. Well, all of the uses that CCMH is planning for specifically meet this criteria as a, of a group quarter. Next slide, please. Okay, the St. Helens comprehensive plan, this is in the official document, which governs everything. And these are the two um, paragraphs that I pulled out. Goals. To promote adequate and affordable housing for all. Policies, encourage and cooperate with all efforts to provide adequate housing for those with special needs. I don't think anybody in this room could argue that what CCMH does is anything but provide services for people with special needs. Uh, so, next slide. Comprehensive plan documents recognize, we got more industrial lands than we need. Comprehensive plan recognizes that we have a scarcity of commercially zoned lands and it recommends that industrial lands be converted to commercial uses. The comprehensive plan recognizes a need for group housing and pledges to cooperate with all efforts to pro- to provide those services. So I think that within the planning documents, we already have all of the criteria and we are presenting it to you uh, today. And I wanna go back to the slide, uh, next slide, yes, I wanna go back to this and, um, just reemphasize graphically that the pink zone, most of it is already developed except for those two small parcels. And the industrial zones in gray, we have plenty of. Okay, I'm gonna talk about one more planning document. Uh, next slide, please. The Riverfront Connector Plan. This is a page out of the Riverfront Connector Plan specifically for the area that we're talking and this is a very good graphic, it does define what is happening in front of the CCMH property. You have two lanes of traffic. You want an older and you have pedestrians using the shoulder. Now, every once in a while, this happens. So what's also happening right now is you see, and I've heard a lot of complaints about it, uh, in our previous meeting, but you have a housing development which is improving Gable Road. And you can start to see what is gonna be Gable Road because they're starting to do the sidewalks and all that stuff. Next slide, please. So this is out of our planning document. Um, this is sort of like, uh, obviously this was a plan and it hadn't been developed yet, but if you look at what's being put into the street right now in front of that housing complex, that is pretty much what's being built. You know, maybe not the island in the middle, but on the sides, that's what's happening. Well, um, to not you know, go off the sidetrack too far, this is much safer. You have a curb, you have a landscape buffer, and then you have a site. The trees and the curb connect or should say protect the pedestrians hopefully from getting killed. Um, and that's what the city requires when developers or anybody develops their property. The city requires the next step is to go to site design review and present plans, present drawings, present a building plan, present a parking lot plan, and present a plan for improving the frontage. I've told CCMH this multiple times that they're gonna be responsible for this and a lot of road frontage. They know it. So next slide, please. Short term. We would like you to re- we would like you to approve the rezon of the property and allow CCMH to develop the property. And this decision is supported by all the documents that I just got done showing you. The other side of the coin is you can wait for an industrial user to come along. Okay. Where would an industrial user go? Well, they got a lot of choices. So are they gonna pick the property over another property? We've got the port that's promoting their properties, we've got the city that wants to promote their industrial lands. There's a lot of other lands available. And I suspect that an industrial user is probably gonna want to go someplace else before picking the site. So, and on top of that, if you look at the site itself, you already have a building and a parking lot, and the parking lot, there is no way you can drive a forty footer through that parking lot. So if, let's say they buy it by the other five acres that's run Gable Road, that site is pretty small. You're not gonna be able to get uh, trucks and other vehicles that would serve an industrial user on that property. It would be very tight. So zone change and things can get, improvement can happen. Or no zone change or we wait a long time. Next slide, please. Short term, you're gonna be able to extend the improvements along Gable Road. Long terms? You know. Uh, that's all I have to say.
Anything you'd like to add to it?
I was gonna add a few, few items to it. First of all, you know, Columbia Community Mental Health is the, the, the Community Mental Health Program of Columbia County. We serve all Columbia County residents. Really, um, those are identified as indigent or in, or in the program health plan. We're here. We have a service to provide. I can't think of a better ideal location for the delivery of our services than where we're currently at. The only impediment to where we really need to go in the next fifteen, twenty years is the zoning change that I've understood. Um, Columbia County's not shrinking in size, as far as I'm aware. I think that we're only gonna grow. And my concern is over the fifteen years, my fifteen year vision for CCMH is the fact that we're gonna have more people there and have addiction issues, we're gonna have more people with behavioral health issues. Um, we're gonna need to expand our services, service capacity on this property and location to meet the demand of our community, which I think everybody wants. I don't see anybody clamoring for more and, and more people addicted or with behavioral health concerns out on the streets, you know, untreated. Uh, again, this is an ideal location. We're really not gonna go anywhere, so general commercial is more of an ideal fit for what we need. Um, with that said, we have to expand this property. And it's not gonna be light industrial, it's not gonna be Walmart and just general commercial. It's gonna be office space, it's gonna be treatment capacity and services that meet the growing demands and needs of our community. A lot of that is homelessness, they're not coming from Portland. They're in our community, they're our citizens, we need to take care of the people that live in Columbia County. That's what our mission and objective is for, is not to serve people outside of our county, but to serve people from our county. If we do, if we are fortunate enough to be able to create a detox facility on the property, um, first of all, if you're not aware, we've already had a detox, um, facility in Columbia County that we serve. And if you haven't heard about it, because it was run really well and it was run silently and we did our job and people recovered and got into the treatment and out of treatment like they needed to. Whoa. So, um, we only lost that, that capacity primarily because of COVID and the workforce shortage, we lost our nursing capacity. And if you haven't, if you've read the news, nursing is not in, is, is in short supply and everybody is needing it. And so, but we're hopeful we can recover that. But the bottom line is general commercial is really going to meet our service design needs for this community. And our objective is to treat individuals in our community that have addiction and behavioral concerns. I have heard arguments in opposition to our development on this property. And the arguments that I've heard in opposition to our development are the exact reasons why we need services developed on our property. There are actually arguments in favor of the development. You know, we do have people out there with untreated needs. And what we need to do is allow us to get this rezoning so we can make proposals for the development or to get them services and get them into recovery and get them into treatment and get them be productive and be more engaged members of our community. Um, we're not going anywhere from this property, so the light industrial is sort of a moot point. I don't know much about planning, right? But what I do know is that we're not gonna go anywhere, so whether it retains, if it stays light industrial, it's just gonna sit there vacant unused. Because we're not gonna sell, we don't have the capacity to relocate any, we don't have the finances to relocate anywhere else. We are where we at, that's where our home is, and we'll just have to, I guess, make do with what we what we have available. But that's not, that's not gonna benefit our community. Um, so if whether you like addictions and behavioral issues, the rezoning of this, this, this property, the general commercial is gonna help us meet our community needs because we do have individuals in our community that have addiction issues that need the treatment. We have people that have mental health concerns that need that mental health treatment. And that's what we're, that what we're mission to do. And it's, there's nothing hidden or secret here. This is just what we do. And I think we're really darn good at it, but we need to get better and this will help us get better.
Thank you. Anybody else on your team?
Nope.
That's right. Hey, so now we'll go for in favor of. Come on up. Come on up and state your name to the record.
Me?
Yeah. And everybody has three minutes. And after you only have a brief. Speaker has to speak.
Okay, Judy Comson, longtime resident. Uh, you wanna disclose right away, I do serve as NAMI National Alliance Chair, uh, on mental illness chairperson for Columbia County. And when we were made aware of the possible rezoning opportunity, we were like, yes, this is so logical, makes so much sense. And I love the graphic on how Al presented the pink and the gray and and everything Todd has said is so true, and we're not getting smaller, we're getting bigger. And it's just, it's the logical, sensible, uh, industrial vs. behavioral. You can have all the industrial park and industrial this and that you want, but we also need to have behavioral health and healthy people and access to care for our families and loved ones. It might be you, might be you someday. Um, so it's awesome. I, I'm excited for this opportunity to happen. We all are, right, Jan?
Yes. Yes, thank you.
Any others in favor of? Uh, do we have any on Zoom?
Well, I thought someone else was gonna go ahead and say something. Uh, Kelly Joseph Smith, I will, um, I wear a lot of hats, but I do wanna speak as a business founder within the community and that these are our community members, the, the, these are our siblings and our parents and our, um, brothers and sisters, and they're, anybody that is going through mental illness or substance use disorder needs a stepping stone, and we do not have stepping stones within our, our community so that they can be successful. This ask, though, is really not about what this is. It is whether or not you would let any other business or entity change the sound, and I believe that you would. So I would hope that you would follow staff orders and, um, approve that. Thank you.
Any others in favor of, before I go Zoom?
I was gonna raise our hand.
Okay, if you're watching on Zoom and you wanna be in favor of, please raise your hand so we can recognize you. And we're not seeing any, so I'm gonna go with neutral. Oh, we got one coming up. Go ahead, Dan.
Neutral.
Yeah, neutral.
Yeah.
I'm from St. Louis, St. Helens. Um, yeah, I don't really have any dog in the fight in this one, other than the fact that I just wanted to point out that, you know, yeah, talk at the council meeting a couple of weeks ago about how we're trying to bring industry in, we're trying to bring money in, um. On his slideshow, a couple years ago, we had twenty-two surplus acres, now we have a hundred and some. We, when industry comes in, they don't want five acres, they don't want ten acres, they want hundreds of acres. I think we have people looking to bring industry here that wanna bring five hundred of acres. We don't wanna give this up. Once you rezon it, that's permanent. Not permanent, but it's pretty close to permanent. We're going through this right now to try to rezon something. It was, it's own light industrial for a reason. Um, you know, and if we're looking at building, you know, uh, temporary housing or temporary transition housing, uh, we want a safe place for those people. Once again, we're gonna need additional law enforcement for that. Gable Road, we have a big you know, thing going on right now. The new apartment complex that came in also brought a lot of big traffic issues. That's something else to look into. If we're gonna have that many vehicular traffic, which is a concern, we're bringing more in. That's just things to be enlightened of, you know, to think about. I don't have a dog in this fight, I really don't, but I want the, you know, we're trying to bring money and industry into this, uh, thing. We, we need a tax base, and for that we need industry. We've had that discussion before at City Council, so, thank you.
Um, do you have to speak in favor?
Oh, yeah, go ahead.
Hello, this is Nick Helmick, uh, little disclosure, I do work at Community Action Team. So I do work closely with CCMH, I'm speaking in favor of this, uh, proposal. I do think that, um, with the amount of influx in the community we've had with mental illness, drug addiction, just ignoring it and trying to push it to the side is the wrong approach. Um, we need more facilities and, uh, more ability to help people get back on their feet, becoming members of society, which would have a better return on investment because, you know, having more taxpayers, people to assist in jobs. I do understand the argument of needing industry. Um, but as the previous person pointed out, we do have plenty of industrial land that I think that, uh, we could have other people come in and use that for more businesses, so that's all I wanna say.
Thank you. Anybody else in favor of? Okay, we're gonna go back to neutral, so. Okay, we're gonna go back to neutral, so.
I own the twenty acres across the street. Or Jan, sorry. Hi, I'm your doll, I'm her daughter, and she asked me to speak on her behalf. So, we're both neutral on this, I wanted to just bring up the Gable Road thing. I think I was looking through the transportation safety plan, and I know it's a priority on the list, but I don't know how high of a priority it is. When that transportation study was done, that was done back, the last one I saw online was two thousand and eleven. And that was pre the apartment, so it would be nice to get at least that road straightened out soon, all the way down to Railroad Avenue. Because that is a huge area down there that a lot of congestion happens, and with more traffic coming out onto there, people are gonna cause more accidents. She owns the ten acres across from the road, directly across to the north. And that property, she does have a rail spur access agreement to that property, and that's why it is owned light industrial, and I believe it's the only property left in St. Helens. Smaller acreage that could be served by rail with its own spur easement. And then she also has another seven and a half acres off of Milton Way, so he has a name in the fight, basically, but she's not fighting. We just want what's best for the community and the safety of the community. So, just wanted to say.
You're next to John Jersey.
Yeah, she's directly across, it's actually two parcels. It's where it says five point six seven.
White section or?
The gray, the gray.
Little red.
Okay. It's eight acres plus another two that's partitioned off, because we were gonna put our warehouse there. Thank you.
Yeah, oh, not you, I was gonna call her up, you have to come up and speak, okay? And say your name for that.
My name's Allison Anderson, I sit on the Board of Directors for Columbia County Mental Health, and I just wanna talk to you about the rail spur there. I worked for Portland West and Rowland, I was the sales director. And we couldn't market that property, it's too small. We tried, trust me, we tried. But I just really, I mean, if you're looking to sell it for rail use, it's not gonna work. So, that's all I have.
Anybody neutral? You may also be.
I'm Joan Ferrison, St. Helens. So, the planning commission was not in favor, that's correct? I saw the Riverfront Connector Plan in regards to the rezoning happen, making it street and improvements, road improvements. But I think that's kind of not applicable here, because this is a connector road, so the, the reality of getting a tree line median kind of seemed a little, little off, I don't know, maybe I'm wrong, please correct me if I'm not. So, it sounds like if CCMH doesn't get the zone with the way they want it zoned, they're talking about selling it. I'm, I'm confused on why CCMH can't utilize the building that they had built, you know, twenty years ago, which really wasn't all that long ago, though it is long enough, I guess. Obviously, as we've grown, to be something of like a train facility that's allowed under industrial, like Riverside. I think something of that nature would seem to be more of a community lifting situation, as opposed to just another thing where we're just bringing in dollars for beds. It's, that's, that's my concern in regards to, you know, once you rezon this, you've rezoned it. We have a huge traffic influx right there, so regardless of whether any kind of in-care facility that would be there, regardless of whether it was CCMH or Almir or whatever, I feel that we have a lot to, the growing pains that are still yet to be determined with the huge influx of the housing development that is built across the street. So, I think to take all this on right now, then coupled with the concerns that we have with, with the police, so it just seems, I mean, I understand this is just for zoning. But if you're gonna look at rezoning this for general, you have to look at what services we have to provide for that, regardless of what it is. Regardless of who it is, you know, and the influx of, of beds and people that are gonna be there, that you're gonna have to provide support. You're gonna have a hotel, motel, Holiday Inn, doesn't matter. We don't really have a surplus of industrial land, let's be honest. We have underutilized industrial land. This town has no longer supported the living, working family since I graduated, which was in ninety-seven. We've had all of our major mills and all of our big, you know, we call our jobs basically leased. You know, we have also been a part of the Metropolitan Service District since nineteen ninety-six. We're a bedroom community to Portland. We talk about growth and trying to be more sustaining, but we don't, we aren't bringing in more jobs to allow that. Get down there on Highway thirty at seven and a half, and you'll see it. It's insane, it's a madhouse on that road, because that's where the jobs are. To, to take this and not figure out how to use this for more jobs through CCMH and uplift that sector of folk, I think it's, it's half, I think it's half hazard.
Others in neutral? Any, no, none Zoom, opposed?
Hi, I wrote down a lot of stuff, and I'm gonna kind of move through this pretty fast. Oh, sorry, Sabrina Moore, St. Helens. I'm talking about the surplus of land, we've had a lot of stuff go on, and in his mapping, he has lumped all light and heavy industrial together, they do serve different uses. Just like your general commercial, your River District, Holton District. And I went through that, and as it shakes out, when you add them all up and look at the outright and conditional uses in those districts, you really come out with about the same amount of general commercial uses as you do light industrial uses. So, and I put that on the table right off front. Traffic, the last traffic impact that was done was for Broadleaf Arbor, which was seventeen hundred and something trips per day. And these guys are wanting to do a zone cap of eleven hundred. Everybody knows we have a problem there, we're exceeding, not meeting the goals, we're exceeding what they want us to have at Gable and thirty. I, I don't know, how are they gonna enforce the traffic cap? They say that they're going to go different directions, and we're not gonna have more than four hundred cars at a certain intersection, taking a certain path. Who, who's gonna do that? How often are you gonna do that? And how many times are we gonna do that between now and twenty thirty-one, when we're supposed to get our turn lane and Gable to help fix the problem? So, that's something to think about. The planning staff feels that this is not a spot zone, I feel like it is. The bulk of the surrounding property is light industrial, that is what it is used for. And although they call it not a budding, a highly incompatible zone, e.g. residential zone, and what CCMH is proposing to do, they're bringing the residential use into an existing light industrial neighborhood that is being used as such. So, it is incompatible, it's just kind of backwards from how you guys usually see it. The extension of the zone, if you look at the map, three hundred and forty-six feet of that property line is what's gonna touch general commercial as it stands now. We've got eight hundred, five hundred, and eleven hundred and eighty feet of property line that is all touching industrial zones. Please deny the map amendment and the zone change. They should infill their existing properties where their needs comply with the zoning. They have two lots here in town, one is mixed use, it is underdeveloped and allows congregate housing outright. They have another one in St. Helens, Zone R five, which will allow residential facility and multi-dwellings as conditional uses that has fifty-eight hundred square feet that is also not built on. And so, oh, not a time. Can I submit this to be put in the record? If you wish to read the rest of it, you can. And there's also more, when I put in the stuff that was put in from the planning. Thank you.
Any others opposed?
Freddie Preheim. I think Al actually did a, a good job of his presentation, but nobody else can even be stoned by facts, so I don't think I should have to be either. I am opposed to this mainly, even though I do think there is a need for congregate housing. I think we have enough low-income housing that is not bringing any access. And that's, to me, my biggest issue, is we have this huge development across from Walmart that is tax-free. And my understanding is that CCMH is also a nonprofit, or not-for-profit, rather. And we're gonna lose the tax base, and we cannot afford to lose more tax base. We are already struggling with policing, as you know, and been a topic tonight. And certainly adding more on street housing is not going to alleviate the, the more policing, it's gonna add to it. You remember one spot already in our community, we're moving down that Walmart, and it's twenty-five percent full. When it's full, what are we gonna do? And we, I think, you know, we need, we're gonna have to start thinking about being proactive and asking them ordinance, make them get their own security. Because we can't have, we don't have the policing staff to service that now. And if we add more housing like this, we simply don't have the tax base to pay for it, and we don't have the cops to cover it.
Any others opposed? They'll give the, get a chance for battle if they'd like. Here.
Jacobson. I'm a little confused, I mean, I, I understand the light industrial versus general commercial argument, we're not selling. So, it's not gonna be light industrial on the market anyway. The second, when we talk about congregate housing, this is not housing, that it's just generally open to anyone. It's not landlord tenant, we have to apply, we do have to practice some of those, practice some of the ORS ninety and ninety-one requirements. This is sheltering care, which means we have staff on site. Law enforcement's not gonna be very, very rarely going to be needed, and if they are needed, then we're gonna be on site to support them in that process. So, it's, it's a treatment, it's a treatment program, transitional nature, so this is not permanent housing. These are people that come in, receive the care that they need, get them into spry, and get them into recovery, get them stable, and get them back out in the community. So, this is not traditional housing that has been commented on. This is shelter and care, so I just wanna clarify that it's, it's, it's a treatment program, it's not a residential program.
Well, that's not, you got all pankey, you're the.
No, I, I guess, I, I guess I don't know a lot about rezoning issues, but we're not selling properties. So, whether it's light industrial, I mean, they, I mean, we're not selling it. And so, I'm confused about that concept.
Yes.
And so, and the second is, is, it is housing, we talk about shelter, but shelter and care, transitional nature, it's not permanent housing. So, we're not gonna keep people there, we're gonna get them to the point of recovery, and then we're gonna move them into permanent housing.
Okay. So, does any councilors have any questions before we?
Mr. Mayor? May I just want to say a few things?
Yes, absolutely.
So, some of the objections, one was graphic, I think I pointed out in my slide presentation that CCMH realizes that they have a large frontage, and they realize that they're going to have to improve it. They're going to have to improve it to city standards, whatever those standards are. All of the standards that the city has, whichever version, as you go down the Riverfront Connector Plan, you decided to pick, but the one I showed you in the presentation was the one specifically in front of the property. All of those versions are safer than what we have now. So, CCMH will expand their, assuming we will prove this zone change, will expand their facility, and as part of that expansion, will, will improve the road. I don't, I don't think I need to say anything more, but I don't know why people don't believe it. Now, some of the other issues that were brought up, and some of the other issues that were frankly brought up in the two letters from the laws and money commissions, don't address the criteria. They don't address the criteria. My presentation focuses on the criteria in our planning documents. I didn't go off on side trips. We have to make a decision based on criteria. You already have in your planning document, you have surplus. I'm not making that up, that was a study that was done by the city. You already have in your documents that you need more commercial land. Again, I'm not making that up. You already have in your documents a schematic plan of how Gable Road is supposed to be developed. You can see landscape buffers already being built in front of the, the parking device. You can see sidewalks separated from the traffic being built right now, all you have to do is drive by and figure out which of that is bicycle lane, which of that is the sidewalk, and which is the landscape buffer. And I think it's pretty obvious now, over the last month, it's pretty obvious. So, the traffic issues and the safety issues that were broadly applied in the future will be addressed during site design review, and if they're not addressed, the city's not gonna approve it. Now, the issue about traffic and the trip cap, I think Jay, Jenny covered it very well. I did not know, frankly, or I had forgotten, about Arbor Village being seventeen hundred trips, okay? CCMH is not proposing anything near a three hundred unit complex. So, think about that for a little bit. You have a three hundred unit apartment complex, and it was just stated, that was seventeen hundred trips per day, or whatever it was. So, a trip cap of a thousand is more than generous for anything CCMH would even think about doing. They're not gonna, they don't even have enough property to build what got built at Arbor Village, let alone, they don't even have plans to meet that. And an eleven hundred trip cap is simply a gross overestimation of what, you know, CCMH could possibly do. But they're not, CCMH isn't gonna build a movie theater, CCMH isn't gonna build a strip mall. CCMH isn't gonna build any of the things that could possibly be built. So, you know, the trip cap of a thousand is more than generous. And let's say, let's say, everything fell apart at CCMH. And they went belly up, they had to sell the property, and as luck would have it, a retail person came in. They would be bound by that one thousand or eleven hundred, or forgot the number exactly, but they would be bound by that trip cap. And if they exceeded it, they would have to do something. They would have to improve the road, of course, they'd have to hire a traffic engineer to figure out where they were, because Gable Road requires traffic analysis. Doesn't matter what you do on Gable Road, it requires traffic analysis, it's in our zoning code. Number two, they would have to figure out what to do about the trip cap. Because anything on that property that exceeds the trip cap would have to figure out a traffic solution for exceeding that trip cap. So, we think number one, that the trip cap is very generous. But number two, thinking down the road, if things, you know, fell apart, and they actually did sell the property, that property would be restricted. That's all I have to say.
Al, do you, what do you envision as a build-out here of this whole thing?
Well, right now, initially, we originally had about a ten thousand foot building plan, and it was We originally had about a ten thousand foot building plan and it was offices and it was half-half. It was half offices and it was half of. Um, crisis, it was an emergency, it was a, so it was the other thing, yeah, it was the detox and the, and, and all of that stuff that I already discussed. And so that would be one way. And then another section way down the future. Um, they've planned, but they don't know, uh, way down the future, maybe some kind of uh, a, a different form of transitional housing. Which is what I tried to point out at our planning commission meeting. That this is all new, all of this, all of this, and he can describe it better than I can, this is all new, it's all. An attempt to deal with. Beautiful health issues that we have in our community. And even what was brought up during, you know, the last hearing, the police station hearing, the homeless portion of it.
I got, I got it, it was great presentation, thank you for being very clear and direct, I appreciate that, um. And you're definitely made clear, you're not selling that property, so. Okay, we're going to end the hearing and uh. We'll pick up five minutes, uh.